All right, good evening, everybody. I will call this meeting a February 24th Richfield City Council meeting to order. If you would all join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our council agenda is the open forum. Is anybody here for the open forum? All right. Seeing that nobody is here for the open forum, we will move to the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of February 11th, 2020, the city council meeting of February 11th, 2020, and the city, or special city council meeting of February 14th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. The next item is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any council comments? All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar, and that will go to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. Item A, consider the approval of a contract not to exceed $226,439 with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc. for preliminary design engineering of the 65th Street Reconstruction Project between 66th Street Ray Drive and Nicollet Avenue, including the Lyndale Avenue pedestrian improvements between 64th Street and 66th Street. Item B, consider the first reading of an ordinance amending subsections 705.17, 715.05, and 720.07 of the Richfield City Code related to sanitary sewer water and stormwater utility billing and establishment of a new subsection 727 relating to the streetlight system. Item C, consider the adoption of a resolution accepting grants and donations received by the Richfield Recreation Services Department in 2019 and authorizing the Recreation Services Department to administer the funds in accordance with any applicable grant agreements and terms prescribed by the donors. Item D, consider the approval of the location of the Richfield Dog Park at Roosevelt Park. And I submit the following, or the previous items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Any questions or council comments? Councilmember Wayland.
I just want to comment briefly. I've had a few residents, I know many residents spoke up during the comprehensive plan process about wanting a dog park, and I've had a couple ask me about it recently, so just wanted to draw attention to that. It's coming this year, it's going to be at Roosevelt Park. I'm excited about that. I don't, I don't have a dog, but it's right by my house, so I'm excited to see lots of neighbors out enjoying it, and wanted to highlight that for the people who have been anticipating that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Wayland. I also just wanted to give a shout out to our Recreation Service Department for all the amazing fundraising that they've been doing, and really providing funds, additional funds for things like our egg scramble, our farmer's market, market bucks that helps match money that you use, whether it's EBT or work at our farmer's markets, and our free summer meal program. So thank you to our staff, and thank you to our community donors and our community members who, who are helping leverage that funding and raise that money. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
The consent calendar has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
This is a public hearing and consideration of the adoption of a resolution specifying the use of funds from the Urban Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant Allocation for 2020, in consideration of a resolution reprogramming 2019 Community Development Block Grant Funds. So the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, funding is annually awarded to Hennepin County on a formula basis from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The county in turn allocates a portion of these funds to the city of Richfield to address local needs relating to affordable housing, community development, and public services. Staff is proposing to use the city's 2020 direct allocation of an estimated $210,000 as follows. $100,000 for the deferred loan rehabilitation program, and $110,000 for first time home, first time homebuyer down payment assistance program. The city's HRA Deferred Loan Rehabilitation Program provides assistance to low-income homeowners for home repairs and maintenance, and the first time homebuyer down payment assistance program offers up to $15,000 in home buying assistance to low and moderate income households seeking to purchase their first home. Additionally, staff is proposing to reprogram funds from the 2019 CDBG allocations. The first time homebuyer program has been increasingly popular, and only $10,000 currently remains from the 2019 allocation. Staff recommends reprogramming $95,000 of the 2019 allocation from single-family acquisition and rehabilitation to the first time homebuyer program in order to provide sufficient funds for the program until 2020 funds are available on July 1st, 2020. So that would switch it over so that $145,000 would be available for the first time homebuyer program. The HRA will be asked to budget HRA, housing redevelopment fund money to fund the single-family acquisition and rehabilitation programs, otherwise known as the new home program, which purchases, rehabilitates, and resells homes through a land trust model. So this is a public hearing. Did staff want to add anything before we open the public hearing?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez, members of the council, I don't have anything to add, but I'm certainly open for questions if you have any at this time.
All right, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing has been closed.
All right. And so now, I would move to adopt a resolution authorizing the use of funds for the 2020 Urban Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant Program, and authorizing execution of a sub-recipient agreement with Hennepin County and any required third-party agreements. Secondly, to adopt a resolution authorizing the reprogramming of the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program Funds from the single-family acquisition and rehabilitation to the first time homebuyer program, and authorizing execution of any required agreements with Hennepin County.
Second.
All right, council comments or questions? Councilmember Wayland?
I just want to really highlight, I think, our, our first time homebuyer down payment assistance program. It's, it's growing in popularity, I think it's a wonderful program. As someone who, just in the last year, purchased a home, even with my wife and I being a dual-income family with, with no kids, it still was challenging to afford a home, and one of the biggest hurdles is that down payment. And there's other programs available, but they're not nearly as versatile and flexible as this program, and so I'm excited to see us providing more funds toward that and making it possible for more families to become homeowners and to, to build up wealth if that, if they'd like to purchase a home rather than renting.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Supple?
I would like to echo that because there are a lot of families out there that are making rental payments that would be the same as a mortgage payment, and what's holding them back is getting the capital in place to do a down payment. So this program helps them get that down payment in place so they can start, you know, creating some generational wealth that they can pass on to their children and get some equity in the family. So I think it's a wonderful program.
And then I will also echo how great, I have heard so many great things from our residents, and there's so much interest in the first time homebuyers program from the folks that I talk to. But also, I, I would encourage people to go to our city website and check out the Housing and Redevelopment Authorities. You can just search it, HRA, in the city's website, and you can look at 2019 HRA Work in Review, and you'll see we have a very robust and diverse programs and offerings and loans and support for homeowners, for renters, for families in the, in Richfield schools, for small businesses, for people interested in opening a storefront, for repairing and upgrading their, if you're a landlord. So we just have a wealth of program and support for our, for our community members at all different incomes, and we try to make them very accessible. So this is just a couple examples of some of those items, but there's so many more, so please check those items out. And thank you to our staff for really leading the way here in Minnesota and in the Twin Cities on a lot of these programs, and particularly, we heard that our Kids at Home program was, it's 15 years, we just celebrated 15 years of having this great program, and there's cities across the Twin Cities that are looking to kids at home to figure out how they can use that same model in supporting their renters and their children and in their school districts. So thank you to the leadership on our staff for that amazing work as well. Any other comments? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to our staff too for, for making this program a reality. It's a program I'm really excited and passionate about. I also just want to, I want to highlight the, the deferred loan rehabilitation program, and then I have just a question about the, the down payment assistance. But I just want to highlight and lift up that other program, especially for seniors in our community that are on fixed, fixed incomes and don't necessarily have the resources to maintain their homes in the way they want to. And we don't want the only solution for them to be, I have to sell my home now. And so this is a program for, for all our residents, but specifically for our seniors. And I know they're our biggest demographic who watches this highly rated television program, that's the city council meetings here twice a month. So I just want to encourage them that if you look around your home and you're wondering how you can get the resources to take care of the needs, maybe to make it handicap accessible in certain ways, that this is why we're here, we're a community together. And, and like our mayor said, take a look at our website, and you'll find resources about that. I just wanted to check in, I get, I just echo everything my colleagues have said about how this program is, is solid and it's a leader, and other folks in the county have, have talked to me about how they are impressed by this program and want to model their programming off of this down payment assistance, and it's really Richfield investing into Richfield families. And we've, I, I did some rough back-of-the-napkin math on, on the value in the last several years. We've seen a billion dollars worth of increase in the last several years, with a B, for Richfield homeowners. That's just something that we didn't wake up, well, we did, we, we built, invested in our infrastructure, we've done everything we could, but that's a billion dollars of wealth that's been created in our community for homeowners. And that's not, I'm not saying that that's fair or that's right, but for our renters who want to participate in that, this is a pathway, and I'm really excited that we have that pathway, because renters, of course, feel the opposite of that. They, the rents go up, their equity doesn't necessarily go up, or doesn't go up at all. So with that, I just wanted to ask, just from staff, how's the program going? Are the, like Councilmember Wayland suggested, you can work really hard and have two incomes and still struggle to make that down payment? Are the, do, do the income levels feel right? Just, just kind of a general check-in.
Sure. So I want to first say thank you. When you thank staff, the, the staff who really do the program are our housing specialists, and they're not here to hear your thanks, but I will be sure to pass that on.
Please pass it on.
They worked really hard to get that program set up. It's not easy to work with federal dollars always, and so it took a lot, but now there are other communities that are taking advantage of that. We worked with the county staff, who was also very helpful in getting that set up. So it, it took a while to get it going, and we've had, made a couple of adjustments, but the income is set, we, we have no choice about the income, the 80% is the max. You know, we certainly like to support at less than that, but that really is, it's a challenging number even at that income level. I, I mean, the greatest limit to the program is really the lack of homes available for sale. It's just, we're really tight, we're so popular, and people aren't necessarily selling. So, I mean, that's, that's another issue that we can't resolve through this, but we're doing our best to make adjustments. We, we upped the amount because the numbers weren't working quite right. We focus, we really are trying to reach underserved populations, they're just, there are groups of people who just have not had the same access to homeownership for discrimination and history, unfortunately, that the federal government was really a large part of, and so we're really trying to address that, and we feel we have. We reported this last week, and you guys maybe remember the numbers better than I do, but I think of our eight or nine loans that we've done so far, six were for households of color, and two were for households with a person with a disability. And then, so we really feel like our marketing efforts have reached our target audience, and, and our housing specialists work really hard to find partnerships with realtors and lenders, and we have a new partnership starting with Nida, who reaches a lot of our Spanish-speaking folks, and so they do credit building work, they do, we do a lot also to, to encourage people to get ready for homeownership.
Yes.
Because down payment is one barrier, and then credit score is the other one, and so there are programs out there that can help you to repair your credit and get you in position to use this money and buy a home, so. So things are going well, whether we can use all this money, we'll see, but we wanted to have it available because we are starting some classes and other outreach, and we don't want to do that, and then, or, or RF64 Town Homes will be available, we don't want to put those things out there and then say, oh, oops, we don't have any money for you. So we were letting, make sure the money was there, and we can always use it in the deferred loan program if we're unable to meet the deadline, so. So I think it's a win for everyone.
Thank you, and you answered, another one of my questions was just as, as we add between, you know, 20 and $30,000 a year on average to our, our single-family home prices, at what point does it, you know, $10,000, and I see it's been increased to $15,000, you know, is that even not enough to, to make a, to, to put people in a position where they can, can purchase?
I mean, I think it's still workable at this point, it's finding the inventory, people layer things, so layer products, and, and that's working, and we worked with Minnesota Housing as well, I should give them a nod, they helped us with the marketing and with making sure that it, our guidelines would be able to layer with their products, so. Yep, so, so far, we're, yep, we're at a good place if we just had homes for sale, so.
Thank you so much.
Great. All right, and with that, all in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has passed. The next item will go to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next item for consideration is approval of a resolution granting an amendment to the Market Plaza or Village Shores Planned Unit Development to allow a new building for a bank branch with a drive-up ATM. And second, to consider approval of a resolution granting a subdivision waiver to allow the creation of a separate lot for the proposed building. And knowing that this is a continuation of a, a conversation from a, a month ago, I won't read the entire report, but we'll just highlight that on January 28th, the council raised some concerns about the grade of the building, what that does for sidewalk entrances and exterior stairs, and so now we have an updated plan from the developer, and I guess I will pass it over to staff if there is further things you'd like to report on.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. I did just want to highlight the things that the council brought up last time, those three main concerns were the grading and how this building was relating to the public sidewalk and the street, whether or not an ATM was actually required by Chase to make this a functional project for them, and then also if there are any existing parking agreements with the current ownership of the shopping center that would preclude something else, perhaps, happening at this corner? So taking those one at a time, Chase and Civil Site Group have submitted revised plans that specifically address that grade issue. A large vestibule has been added on the south side of the building that's, that is even with the sidewalk on the 66th Street side. What that does, it obviously improves the look of the building from 66th Street, it's what we wanted there, replacing the exterior stairs and ramp with a set of interior stairs. And, but again, there are still stairs, now they're just inside the building. In terms of whether or not the ATM was required, Chase did decide to submit with that ATM, they do believe that it is vital to their project. We also did specifically receive a call from a member of ARDAP, the Richfield Disability Advocacy Partnership, supporting that ATM for accessibility and equity issues related to that population in our community. And then in terms of existing parking agreements, we did speak to the owner of the, the current owner of the property. There are not existing parking agreements with any of those tenants that would necessarily preclude something a little bit larger or more intense at this corner. However, this is the, the size of the parcel that they're selling, so Chase themselves couldn't build anything, anything larger on this piece of property. And then I'm happy to answer any other questions, but in general, you know, staff feels that this proposal is a significant improvement over the previous proposal. We do feel that this makes a large difference, it's what we're looking for at this corner, some activity activating that final corner at 66th and Lyndale, and we are in support of this project.
Are there questions? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So I will now, as I get this zoomed in, sorry, I was looking at the pictures, which changes where it's zoomed in. So I will make a motion to approve a resolution amending the planned unit development, conditional use permit, and final development plan for Market Plaza slash Village Shores, and approve a resolution granting a subdivision waiver to allow the creation of a separate lot for the proposed building.
Second.
Council questions or comments? Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted to say thank you because I think the changes made it better. When I look at the side-by-side, the before and after pictures, the changes that were made did make a big difference, and so it looks better, and I think it'll help the community. And I got the same email from the ARDAP, and that brings up a big concern about, you know, equity and if, if someone has, in the wintertime, it's easier to use a drive-through, and it allows people to have more accessibility, I think it's a good thing.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you. I, I missed you guys' last council session, but I did watch the, the discussion on, online, and, and I, one, one kind of conceptual question I had about sort of the long-term use of the, of the space. If, if we did grant it for Chase Bank, would then, if a restaurant were to come in, like a, a fast food restaurant, would they need to seek any additional permitting? Would we have any opportunity to maybe check what might, for lack of a better word, be a less desirable use for that corner?
Councilmember Troutman, yes. This approval, this conditional use permit, well, it does run with the land, it's specific to this use. A fast food user would be considered something else, and they would need to apply for a conditional use permit or an amendment to the PUD as well.
So in this circumstance, where we're considering a variance for the bank because it falls within, is it 500 feet? We would have an opportunity to, would we be bound by our precedent of giving the, the variance here, or would we be able to look at that variance freshly and say, no, this was actually more intended to space out fast food restaurants, and so that variance would be distinguishable from, from this, I'm just, in the future?
Yes, absolutely, it would be. The findings that are listed in your resolution and throughout your packet are specific to this proposal. They talk about how this is a limited-use drive-through, how it is specifically different from a fast food user who would require greater queuing space and perhaps other considerations. So yes, this is specific to this limited-use ATM with the bank.
Thank you so much, and I also want to thank Judy Mo and ARDAP for, for helping me think differently and, and understand some of the benefits of a drive-through for all our citizens and our residents, so I appreciate that.
Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would echo Councilmember Supple's statement. I think the changes that were made vastly improved this. Thank you to the developer for being willing to, to circle back, come with a new proposal. In relation to the, the drive-through conversation, I think on sort of both sides of the should, like specifically for this project, should there be one, shouldn't there be one? I've heard from some residents who have kind of opened my eyes to new aspects of that decision. I think we've mentioned the, the concerns from ARDAP about accessibility and just the, the convenience factor to, to a level that convenience is almost an inadequate word, that it, it's obviously convenient for anyone to use a drive-through, but for someone with a disability, it can mean not having to literally lift a relative out of your car multiple times. But I, I do also, I heard from a few, a few members of the Planning Commission actually, who are interested in, in having more of a discussion around drive-throughs, and they were less concerned about bank ATMs, but more for, and so less concerned about this specific proposal. I guess I'm curious, from staff's perspective, is, knowing that we are likely to have, especially now that Minneapolis has banned all new drive-throughs, that we are likely to have other businesses that will be looking for Minneapolis's neighbors and proposing drive-throughs, would it be worth having a, and the Planning Commission may be the most appropriate place for this conversation to start, or maybe a joint work session, but would it be worth having a larger conversation about our code around drive-throughs, or is it more appropriate to address the specifics of each proposal as they come up?
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. We have talked about this internally as a staff. Right now, our most stringent, stringent regulations regarding drive-throughs are in the mixed-use district, and that's been on our list of things to address in all of our districts throughout the community, is to apply those more stringent regulations across the board. I think from staff, and so yes, the place to start with that is definitely Planning Commission to talk about if any tweaks need to be made. I will say that from a staff perspective, we will, I think, continue to recommend that we address the negative aspects of drive-throughs, things like noise, interference with pedestrians, appearance, things like that, as opposed to banning them like Minneapolis did. You know, ARDAP and Judy Mo have brought up a number of concerns. Drive-throughs are also very helpful for our senior population. There are reasons that drive-throughs can be an, an asset, and so I think we'll continue to recommend that we, we address those negative externalities, but we, we do not outright ban drive-throughs.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Wayland, I appreciate you asking the question because I also have had a couple conversations, and I appreciate I'm hearing staff's response, and that these are conversations that we're having internally, and that if there's anything more, that there'll be a conversation at Planning Commission to start with. And then just echoing my colleagues, I, I am appreciative of the work that staff has done, as well as the developer and Chase Bank, to really look at this and improve it, because this is going to be in our community for the next 40, 50 years into the future, so we want to make sure that we are looking at all of our options and that this is a great fit, and I, I do think that this was also an improvement. So thank you to the staff for working on that, as well as, as Chase Bank. Any other questions or comments? Great. All right, well, there was a motion, and there was a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the resolutions have been approved. Thank you. The next item is the City Manager's Report.
No report tonight, Mayor.
All right, and the next item is Claims and Payroll. I cannot remember who did it last time, does anyone remember?
Troutman did it last time.
Okay, how about Councilmember Wayland? I don't think you've done Claims and Payrolls, do you want to do it?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve Claims and Payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and Payroll has been approved. Hats off to hometown hits, we will start with Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This past week, city staff and city elected officials were fortunate to be invited over to Richfield Middle School for the Beacons Program, and that's a joint program with the Boys and Girls Club of the Twin Cities, the YMCA, and also the Richfield Public Schools. And it's an after-school program, and it takes place at Centennial, Richfield Middle School, and the high school. And so we were given tours of the building and the programs by some of the middle school students that are in Beacons, and they told us all about it, and some of the Centennial kids had potted little plants for us, and then we got to hear from some of the stakeholders in the whole thing, and it was just fun to see all the kids. And it was just fun to see all the kids and they were jazzed to be after school and working on different, they had little Sphero robots and they were making friendship bracelets and working on their homework and various things. And so that was a lot of fun and I just wanted to thank everybody for coming to that and for inviting us to it. And then secondly, tomorrow, we're having, the reason we're having this meeting on a Monday night is that tomorrow is precinct caucuses that start at 7:00 PM for the political party of your choosing. And just want to encourage people to go online and find out where their caucus is happening because it will be making decisions for the local and state level as far as who candidates are and which issues you want to pass up through the party structure to try and advocate for. So please go to your precinct caucuses and have a voice in democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. Building off that, want to remind folks as well that a week from tomorrow is the presidential primary. You can also vote early already. That's been open for a while. Another school-related thing, I had the joy to meet today with the new Safe Routes to School Coordinator. His name's Will and he is working in partnership with the school district and our Public Works Department to update our Safe Routes to School Plan, which includes like engineering changes to our streets and sidewalks to make things safer as well as education and encouragement and programming for students and families to make walking and biking to school a safer and more enjoyable and more viable option for more people. So we'll look forward to ongoing work with him. Wanted to say, since we had such a high interest in the new Sustainability Commission in our interview process, just wanted to remind folks that even if you did not apply to be on the commission or applied, but there was not enough room for you, that everyone, those are open meetings and the first one is this Thursday evening. And so would encourage you, if you are interested in the sustainability efforts, to come join us. And even if you're not a voting member, you can still be part of that, that conversation and those efforts. And then the last thing, wanted to give a shout out to, I believe as Neil, our communications person, put it, the new mammal spending time at the Woodlake Nature Center, our new director, Paul Smithson, who, that was Neil's tongue-in-cheek Facebook post a week or so ago. But I had a chance to meet Paul too and it sounds like many of our community members have met him and shared stories of why you love our nature center, many people who've been going there and enjoying it for decades. But would encourage you, if you haven't met him yet, to stop by the nature center, share your stories, get to know him. And share, he clearly has already gotten the message that people in Richfield love Richfield and are really proud of our community. But we should hit that message home. So you can go tell them what you love about Richfield too.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple quick hats off. Like Councilmember Supple mentioned, hats off to everybody who's going to attend a caucus. And a word of encouragement, if you've never participated in that part of the democratic process, it can be a little intimidating. You don't know what's going to happen necessarily. I just want to encourage you to go because you will go with lots of other people that have never done that before. And people in both parties are really nice and are there because they care. And a lot of people are there because they care and are confused. And so just don't let that be a barrier. Go and learn and meet your neighbors. And the great thing about the caucus process is that you can, it's not just, I want this person or I want that person, but it's an opportunity for you to say, this is an issue that's important to me. And you get to share that with your neighbors. And if your neighbors agree with you, then you have an opportunity to put that idea forward and tell more neighbors. And it's a beautiful process, even if it's a little chaotic. So I would just encourage everybody, if you, if you care about politics at all, that's such a better use of your time than say, no judgment on cable news or anything like that. But this is a good use of your democratic franchise. So hats off to that. I also want to give a hat tip and hats off to my councilmember colleague, Ben Wayland, for also sporting light floral plaids in the tie today. We all feel the warm weather and I think it just brought out the best in our color palette. So hats off to you, sir.
Thank you. And to go off of the community kind of engagement and getting involved in your community, there's a couple conversations going on that are coming up. So Wednesday, February 26th, from 6:00 to 7:30, there's a community conversation about why should I care about the 2020 census? So I believe the city of Richfield will be a part of that too, will we be a part of that? And organizations like Clues, Mira, Citizens League and others. So it will be a bilingual conversation to learn more about the census, why we should care about the census, answer any questions or concerns we may have, and then learn more about the importance of being counted. And again, another great opportunity to connect with your neighbors, to build community. And the one in Richfield is going to be, oh, I'm sorry, though, I might have said the wrong date. There's two of them, one in St. Paul and one in Richfield. The meeting in Richfield is on Friday, February 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Mira, which is located in the Central Education Center at 7145 Harriet Avenue South. So once again, it's the 28th from 6:00 to 8:00 at Central Education Center to learn more about the census. And it is family-friendly and will be bilingual. Another family-friendly bilingual free event in our community is on Saturday, February 29th, from 9:30 to 12:30, there is a childcare provider training. So we have this amazing asset that is recognized nationally, which is a community-run, community-led childcare provider network of family-friendly and neighbor childcare providers called La Red Latina de Educación Temprana. And every single month, they hold free Spanish language, but primarily Spanish language, but English speakers can go and they're very flexible and supportive as well. And so it could be bilingual if necessary. But free culturally appropriate trainings on early learning and school readiness and things that, that will help, whether it's parents or childcare providers or aunties and grandparents in raising strong, healthy, school-ready kids in our community. And the one on the 29th is focused on understanding behavior and making sense of what you see and what you hear for the children that you care for. So usually at these trainings, we have anywhere from 30 to 80 adult participants plus many more kids. So bring your family. The food is amazing. The community members are great. And that is to support folks in, who are childcare providers. And then lastly, I'll just say, I've been spending the last few weeks when I just, when I feel low and right now I think it's the weather and there's many other things that you just kind of get to February and you're ready for winter to be over. And so I go out into the community. I talk to students. I was at Holy Angels. We were, I was at, I think it was Dual Language School last week as well. The Optimist Club had their chili dinner as well, their chili fundraiser. The League of Women Voters had a great community event and a great meeting with Blanca here from the city on the census. And then Rotary has their meeting every, every other week. It's just so encouraging and so uplifting and inspiring to just see your neighbors getting together to make a difference, to listen to the kids in our community and the great ideas that they have that are making a difference and making an impact right now and will continue into the future. So I just can't say enough about the importance of building that sense of community and connection with your neighbors and that the real impact it has and oftentimes immediate impact, whether it's just helping someone feel better that day and not even knowing that you influenced someone's day in a positive way, to proposing something that makes your community better. I just really encourage people to always try to seek things that build community because they really do make a difference. And I was just reminded of that in the past few weeks. So that's all I have. Anything else from folks? All right. We will, I will adjourn the meeting.